Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular board meeting, Beverly Hills Unified School District for September 24th, 2024. Can we start with a flag salute? And we have Sofia Davutpor and Noah Waterman. Please come on up. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if one of you would like to take us through the mission and vision statement?
Our mission is for educational excellence. Our vision is our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Okay, thank you so much. And now we have the community pledge.
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve the educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment.
Therefore, therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote this environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to...
All right, thank you. Round of applause. All right, very good. Well done. Can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Dr. Breggy, report of closed session?
Yes, Dr. Stern, thank you very much. There was one item in closed session for action. The board has approved case number 2024-0500943 to 0.
Okay, thank you.
With one absence.
I believe we'll have Dr. Seaman come up.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm excited to welcome in a moment two of our students from Horace Mann Elementary School and our astound teacher, third grade as well, Dr. Stam. They call her Mrs. Stam, but I still keep him the Dr. Stam title. The exciting part about this is I want to thank the Board of Education. A year ago, we went on this journey with cognitively guided instruction around math. We were, Dr. Stam was one of our math leadership team members, one of the pilot teachers. Last year, we even had Mrs. Megan Missrahi even come in and demonstrate some of our early grades and what they're able to do with CGI math. And so tonight, we are able to get a glimpse into our third grade level. And so that being said, I want to thank you guys for your support. By the end of October, we'll have all of our teachers in our elementary grade bands trained in CGI math instruction. And so that being said, I'm going to hand over the stage. I think we are ready.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name's Maria Stam, third grade teacher at Horace Mann. Thank you for having us. And I'm going to keep my portion as brief as possible because it is just so much more important and beneficial to hear from the students in the classroom than from the adults, in my opinion. But as Dr. Seaman mentioned, cognitively guided instruction is not just something happening in our classroom. It's happening across all elementary school classrooms at both Horace Mann and El Rodeo. So when I'm talking about this, I'm representing all TK through fifth grade teachers at both schools. So what exactly is CGI? This is what we call cognitively guided instruction for short. This is an approach to teaching mathematics that really focuses on the cognitive processes that students use when solving problems. So rather than the traditional pen and paper, kind of quick check, going through the facts, this is really allowing students to stop and think about what they're doing to solve these problems and use a variety of strategies. There is no one correct answer to get to the solution, and that really is what is at the heart and soul of CGI. So when one student might be using a whiteboard, as pictured on this slide, another student might be using cubes. Some people might be doing it mentally. And at the end, all students are coming together and they're sharing their strategies with each other, so that they're not just hearing one correct way to get there, they're seeing so many different ways to get there and also building that confidence and knowing, oh, hey, maybe someone else did the same thing I did, or even cooler, I thought of a strategy that maybe nobody else thought of. This is a really great way to provide differentiation and enrichment in the classroom as well, because students are doing different strategies. You can give them different numbers to work with, and they're able to build on that knowledge and keep going farther and farther to show what they know, which is really great from a teacher's perspective. Why CGI? I'm just going to quickly read this so that we could get to the main superstars tonight. Through the use of CGI, all BHUSD elementary teachers seek to create a supportive learning environment where students feel confident in their mathematical abilities and can develop a strong conceptual foundation. So here's another picture from our classroom. Students are working together, they're sharing their strategies, they're excited about what they're learning, and they're excited to get to teach that to another student. Also, that part about a supportive learning environment is really important. This isn't just an overnight thing, a one day thing. This is something that we continue to build on. So students know, what do we do if maybe my partner doesn't understand? What do we do if I need to help someone through the steps? They know how to react and how to support their classmates through this learning process. And so with that, we have two examples of some problems we have done in the classroom. And there are such a wide variety of problems, and I'm going to show you a little bit at the end. But the first one comes from Sofia, and this was really early on in the school year. So August 15th, was that what, the second, third day of school? I don't even, third day of school. So really early on. So Sofia, would you like to come up to the front? And how about Sofia, you want to start by reading us the problem that you were solving?
Andre has three cookies. Sofia has five more cookies than Andre. Ariella has double the amount of cookies that Sofia has. How many cookies do Sofia and Ariella have?
So Sofia, to start off, how did you solve this problem?
I solved it by writing down three plus five equals eight. Then I doubled it and did it eight plus eight equals sixteen, and that's how I got my answer.
And did you use any math tools when you were solving this problem? Maybe like a whiteboard or cubes or anything?
I used my whiteboard, my whiteboard marker, and my eraser.
And how did you feel when you found the solution to your problem?
Um, good.
Can you tell us a little bit more, why did you feel good about it?
Because I finally got my answer from multiple steps by adding.
And how did you, how did you feel when you were able to share your answer with other students?
I felt good because then they learned from me. And if I share, they will learn, and if they share, I will learn.
Thank you, Sofia.
Very good.
And then we have a problem much more recently, and this is one of those problems where the third grade standard only goes up to the hundreds place. And so we just kind of threw this at them. Let's, let's make it even more challenging. Why not? Let's try it. So it was really fascinating to see how Noah approached this problem.
So the question was Noah has 137, I mean, 137,469 erasers. If he puts them into piles of 10,000, how many piles will he have? And how many piles will be left over? So what I, so how I solved this problem is I saw that I would, the easiest way for me to do it was by counting by 10,000. So when I finally counted from 10,000, 13 times, I saw that I got 130,000. And then the leftover was 7,469. So then that was my answer. My answer was 100, 130,000 was the number and 7,469 is my leftover. And I felt, I felt very good when I solved this problem because it made, because, and it also made me feel good to share it because then I knew that people were learning from me. And I, and I was also proud to see that I got a way to solve it correctly.
Thank you.
So yeah, this was one of those examples where neither of these were really in the third grade curriculum. This is something that we just started off our day with and was a way for them to stretch that understanding and show me what they knew. And based off of this, based off of the responses I got, I can go ahead and plan out the next, the next day and change things up as necessary based on what I saw from their work. And the really great thing about whiteboards is that it's a really quick check. You can go around, see where students are at, see what they have written down, and they also get to share that with another person. We do a little game called mingle. They go around, we mingle, they share it with three other people, and then two students are chosen to share it in front of the class, as you see on these pieces of paper. So Noah did it on his whiteboard, counting by 10,000s. Rosie, another student, did it using cubes, where each cube represented 10,000. Both students were able to come to the same solution. Similar to Sofia's problem, Sofia did number sentences, where Ava kind of set up a chart and did it more visually. I really try to highlight students that have different strategies from each other so that they're able to see a wide variety. And again, this doesn't just have to do with word problems. We do things like, how many ways can you solve 125 plus 237? And this is a really nice one because you're able to pull up multiple people. As you can see, I think we had four different people sharing here. And the next picture is actually an example from Ms. Delajani's class, just again, showing that this is all over the school. And hers was more of a notice and wonder where students are finding similarities and differences between mathematical images. So that is CGI in our classrooms. This is something that we are continuing to develop, really important, powerful stuff. And I'm excited that the district is providing the opportunity for all of us teachers to learn more about it and be able to bring this to our classroom. So thank you, Noah and Sofia. Awesome job.
Thank you. We'll go around and have some comments about this. I'll, I'll start. Cognitive guided instruction is a great way of looking at math because, you know, 20, 30 years ago, it was more what we call drill and kill, whereas, you know, you gave worksheets and people, you know, quickly calculated things. But the wisdom has moved towards analyzing how you're thinking and for younger kids to actually look at how they are thinking and also come up with alternative strategies. And it makes them think more flexibly and more fully about math. And that's kind of what cognitive guided instruction is. But let's go around and we want to give some comments.
Yeah, I just want to say how it's a great, it's great to see how our students are getting so ahead and just in the start of the school year, they're already getting thrown with this stuff, but they're able to do it. And I can't wait to hear more about it and how much they'll excel towards the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stam. Noah and Sofia, are you guys available to file my taxes?
Well, Noah, you have 139,000 erasers, so.
Somebody must have hit up a Staples truck or something. Dr. Sherman or Dr. Seaman, can I ask a question? Sorry. Thank you. So to what frequency is this being used throughout, for example, let's say, third grade?
So, so we started it last year. I'm just going to go ahead and start kind of a history lesson, is being able to really get our students to think creatively and have that productive struggle vocally, which kids get frustrated with math, and they aren't able to articulate math. They're not able to share their strategies with other people. And so last year, we had a pilot, which was our math leadership team, is about 15 teachers. Well, there's one per grade band initially, and then we were able to create a second cohort. We're in a cohort three and now cohort four. And so it's a way for them to open up the day, get them to be able to share a math fact, be able to work through productive struggles, set this tone for the day. It's not in replace of teaching math, it's in addition to teaching math. So it's just another strategy for our teachers to use while still teaching our standards, but a way for our kids to then be able to stand up in public and talk about math, which we haven't seen in a very long time.
No, and that's fair, and that's indicative of the effectiveness of this type of instruction. I just, I want to know as far as district wide, is this something rolled out district wide?
Yep.
That, I mean, and I would admit that there's nothing new under the sun. This is just, once again, they put three letters together to label something that a lot of teachers have been doing for many, many years. So kudos. But I do want to make sure that that it's, it's kind of equal access to this effectiveness, if we feel that this is going to overall have positive results in translating into testing because for third grade and future success in mathematics for our students.
Yeah, absolutely. So by the end of October, we'll have 100% of our teachers with the strategies, if not already have some strategies or they've shared strategies, whether late start Wednesdays, collaboration within their PLC work amongst their grade levels. And so yes, everybody should expect to see CGI within each of the classrooms, evidence of it, as we're doing walkthroughs or collaborations or PLC conversations. So I want to thank Dr. Sherman, too. He has definitely allowed us this opportunity to be able to continue the work. Maggie Mayberry as well, our elementary education coordinator last year also was very instrumental in being able to bring this group together, get this work moving forward.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you, Dr. Sherman. Thank you, Dr. Stam. Thank you, Noah and Sophia. Good work.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. I thought it was great to see that the students demonstrated that they had the underlying math skills. So that was good to see. I just was curious to know, Dr. Seaman, in anticipating the CASP testing, is there some, I know you and your evidence. So I trust that it's there, and I just want to learn about it, that is there some kind of an evidentiary correlation in learning with this approach and the results? So, you know, like, can you take us from the A to Z of it? So our students know their math facts. This allows them to think in a more creative and communicative way. And then is there some kind of a proof that therefore they might achieve better on the CASP?
100%. So the CASP exam is actually kind of two parts. So you have your performance task, which is really just your sit and get your multiple, you know, your, your ABCD. Can they do the actual equation? And then the other piece to it is allowing them to be able to write. A lot of them are going to be required to write on their process. And that was one of the biggest components. If you look earlier, three to four years ago, we were missing, that's the piece that we're missing in the puzzle, is our students' ability to be able to be mini computers. They can report back what they've learned, but they can't transfer it or explain it to other students. But we just watched both of them being able to explain and transfer. So on the CASP exam, it does require that piece. Where's the extension to it? And not just to sit and get, sit and get is about 45 minutes, and then the other portion of the exam is like about an hour.
So that's the...
And it's a 60/40 percentage split, so we actually get more points. Not that we're teaching to the test. That's not what Dustin Seaman just said, people.
But it's important.
It is important.
So that means that there's a performance test within the CASP, and this is geared toward that in part.
Yes.
I got you. Ms. Stam knows what's up.
Yeah. And that's both, but that's also in English, too. So it's not an isolation of just the math portion. So we, we want our students to be able to also read and write, be able to share, explain their process of how sentence structure to paragraph design.
Yeah, overall comprehension.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. How'd they get there?
Well, I would like to make a few comments about the program. First of all, this is not to replace, as my colleague said, drill and kill, because I, as a teacher, know that it's just important to know the math facts at the tip of your fingers instead of doing this with them. And I, and I know that this is to increase the understanding of being able to read and to perform problems that they can solve in various ways. And that is amazing, because many children, when they get to the sixth grade, do not know how to read a problem and figure out how to solve it. They lack that skill. And this will start to build in that in the lower grades. But I do want to reinforce that I do not think that this should be taking in place of the old drill and kill, which I, as a sixth grade teacher, saw so bad in the grade that I taught. And I, I'm sorry that I have to say that. And I'm glad to hear that now that this is being done with the CGIA at the lower grades, and it will tie into the testing that they will take, that it will have some effect on the score. I love the presentation of the two children. That was amazing, and I want to thank them. They were fabulous. And parents, you've got two kids that are going to be honor students all the way along. So I, I think that the main thing that there will be this ability to read and solve problems using a variety of skills and letting them do it on their own. In other words, don't insist that it has to be done this way.
Right.
If you could get to the right answer, I don't care. That's the way I used to teach.
That's good, yeah.
I love that approach. And if they did it, but, but they'd say, I can't do it that way in class. I said, I don't care. You do it your way, I'll do it my way. And I love the fact that they get a chance to explain and describe how they did it. So I'm, I'm hopeful that this will have an impact on our test scores come May, which will be the, of course, the proof of what it's going to do. And so I want to thank you for your presentation tonight. Very interesting. I enjoyed it immensely. And thank you for coming.
There's still a strong focus on math facts as well.
Right.
Especially multiplication facts in third grade.
I have to tell you, one of the, one of the things that I used to go nuts with, I'd have the kids, I'd give them a series of numbers with decimals in them, and they'd just line them up any which way. They didn't, and I would go crazy with the way they would line up the decimal points. They never knew that they should be in a lot, at sixth grade.
Yeah. And we, and we do practice. I don't like to use the terminology of drilling kill. We do practice a lot. Yeah.
I know. I'm just making a point that I haven't forgotten the drill and kills, which my friend here mentioned.
Yeah, no, no, both, I think, are, are relevant. I mean, you want to have what we call automaticity with, with those facts, so that you're not, you know, you're not like, you know, burning the engine when you're trying to figure that out. You know it automatically so that you can go on to the higher thinking abilities, which is unpacking the problem and looking at multiple ways of solving a problem and using critical thinking. Excellent job. Thank you.
We should officially adopt the term repeat and complete instead of drill and kill.
Practice till perfect is what I always go with.
It's got a rhyme. It's got a rhyme. It'd be catchy.
Listen, as a former athletic coach, practice till perfect.
Rebecca, now you have something new to do.
So can I just also say, Noah, Sophia, great job. I also want to give just another perspective, because as you heard tonight, how important it is for critical thinking. But as a former math teacher myself, how important it is for the teacher, because oftentimes when you're doing the worksheets and you're just giving information back and forth and you're, you're looking to see if a student is right, every student deserves to get that individual feedback. And as Dr. Stam was alluding to, is like through the whiteboards and through the conversation, that's where the teacher is able to pick up, whether their strategy is working or not. And so by listening and walking around and sharing, as she was explaining, that's how a teacher is getting that feedback, whether they really truly understand that mastery piece, is the conversation, not whether they've written something down. It is all about the conversation, and it's amazing what you can hear from, you know, 25 kids in a classroom, whether they really understand it or not.
I will bet you, you, Dr. Stam, also learned from them some of the things they do.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay. Yeah, we can do a picture. Okay, real quick. Okay. Oh, sure. Okay. For those of you online, we're doing a quick photo op. Dr. Sherman, Dr. Seaman.
Thank you. Thank you, Sophie.
Who are we looking at?
Are we going to green? They're both green moms.
CGI.
One last one. Sophia and... One, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to walk them out. I'll be right back. Okay. We're going to move on to public comment.
Oh, nope. We got one more.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening again, Board of Education.
Yes.
We have the opportunity to, during our teacher spotlight, last week, we approved some of our mentors for our California Teacher Induction Program. And we thought this would be a great opportunity to be able to show the level of support that we are able to provide our new teachers into the district. I think a lot of times, people don't know in the community or even within our own... or even within our own school district, the extensive support that comes out of the district office for any of our new teachers, all the way up to clearing their credential. And so we actually have Dr. Sherman, who's going to walk you through the California Teacher Induction Program. And then we also have some teachers here that are going to actually share some of their personal experience. So I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Sherman.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. It's great to be here. So I'm just, a couple of weeks ago, I was asked to discuss our induction program with our AXA Westside Charter. And so I did this presentation and upon that, it was good timing, like Dr. Seaman said, with our mentors just being approved, to bring it here for everyone. So I'm gonna walk through some things and, um, if I can get the slide deck up, I've got what's in store up here. We've got our beginnings and overview of my participation in the program, our digital organization and branding. I'm gonna talk about our mentor recruitment, the steering of the program in the future, and our lessons learned. So-- Sorry, I need, I'm just waiting for the, the clip to come up. It's a, it's a little video clip, that's why. Sorry. Yeah. Here we go. All right. So this is, upon my entrance to BHUSD, I was put in charge of our California Teacher Induction Program, which is shorter as CTIP. And this was a video of Dustin putting all of our files from BITSA and CTIP onto my desk. And once Dr. Seaman was done doing so, this is what my office looked like.
Wow.
Um, and then this is a live clip of Dr. Seaman the second he dropped off all of the files. So, um, basically, and I, and I kid about this, but really I was left in charge of the program and figuring out a new way to get our-- what we used to do is send our teachers to Culver City. So how can we make our program more home-based while working with the other district? And I was put in charge of that. And since I've been in charge, we have not attended a single-- actually, the very first one I did was orientation at Culver City. And we've housed every single meeting since then. So we are part of the Culver City and Beverly Hills Consortium. So on both of our websites, we've got our induction program handbook and that's got all of our guidelines in there. We're also part of the Cluster Four Greater Los Angeles. So actually yesterday, I was in Bellflower with the Greater Los Angeles Cluster Four, along with our Culver City directors as well. So we do that about four times a year, two virtual, two in-person, where the whole cluster gets together and discusses our programs. This year's, uh, yesterday's focus was on the new release of our CSTPs, which are the California Standards of Teaching Profession, which were just published, the new revised version, last April, 2024. So here's a little chart we have of the phases of our first-year teachers. And it's all about the attitudes about their teaching and about their profession. So it's very important as a program director and as mentors in the program that we understand what our new induction teachers are going through. So they start out with great anticipation and right about now, they're going right down that mountain in survival road. They'll hit disillusionment and eventually they'll start coming back up to rejuvenation, reflection, and eventually anticipation for the next year. So this is kind of the guideline of the struggles of, of getting through the profession. But we like, we're gonna see our dips. But the, the good part about this is bringing them all back toward that anticipation page, stage. And it's important, like I said, for us to know where our candidates in the program are. So this is just, um, I'm gonna talk through quick components of the program. This is a quick check dime guideline you see on the right that goes through all of our important dates through the year. But the main thing about the program is they have weekly reflective meetings with mentors. So every candidate is assigned one-to-one with a mentor where they must meet with them one hour per week, which gives them that in-time support that's quite necessary for new teachers. They get observed by their mentors three times. And the, the best part about a teacher induction program is these are non-evaluative. There, it's also confidentiality between mentors, candidates in the program. So it's really allows the candidates to open up without feeling the pressure of being evaluated, try new things and really get that in-time support. They get a full day of peer observation, so they get to go out and view exemplary teachers. They can, they have to view at least two different teachers, but they can view as many as they can in that full day. They have monthly seminars, which we host onsite and workshops where we give them the PD and, and guide them through the process of their induction program. There are quarterly cluster professional developments that are held via Zoom. The first one this year is September thirtieth, where mentors and candidates are all able to attend. One major thing they have to complete in part of the program is a class profile. And this is, the idea behind this is really getting to know all of the students in their class, what are their strengths and areas of need in terms of their academics, in terms of their social, emotional, and anything else they know about those students. And then ultimately, they all have to create an individualized learning plan where they are selecting their own personal goals in terms of growing within the teaching profession. So those are the components. I'm gonna talk about the importance of branding. So like I said, when I came, it was, we were-- prior to me arriving, the candidates were attending meetings in Culver City. And it felt more of like a Culver City program than it did a BHUSD. So the, the importance here was how do we make it feel like our own, that our candidates are supported? And so we've really taken over our branding of the program. Here you see our CTIP colloquium from last year. We've got our name tags and our branded GIFs, our certificates for our BHUSD for both year ones and year twos. We've got our own celebratory cookies with all of our candidates' names on them. That was last May. We used to have our beautiful branded CTIP cake there. There we all are in May 2023 as a whole cohort with our administrators or at the site level and district level and then all of our candidates and another branded cake. So what we learned about those nice, beautiful branded sheet cakes is, what happens is we don't really go through it and then Dr. Seaman and I look like this afterwards. So that's what, that's the importance of the cookies over cake in terms of our new dessert for our colloquium. So like I said, lots of paperwork when I first came. So this is kind of me taking all those bits of folders from twenty years ago and getting rid of them in place for our digital organization. So I'm gonna walk you through real quick about how the program is completely digital in terms of their organization and their, them getting their credential cleared. So what all of them have is access to calendars, timelines, and rolling agendas for mentors and candidates, where they can find all of our important links in our rolling agendas throughout the entire year. So everything's accessible there. So are our guidelines. They've got their own Google Calendar with all their reminder dates. This is what a sample mentor folder would look like. So mentors have access to the CSTPs. The big one is the induction folder there, which is for the candidates. But they've got all their organization things that they need there. This is what a candidate induction folder would look like. So the main things they have, which I'm gonna walk you through right now, are the exemplary teacher observations. So they complete a couple of forms because they get to go see exemplary teachers. And this is their documentation of not only doing it, but what did they really learn from this experience? How are they gonna bring it back into their classroom? They get three mentor observations. So they're gonna do one in about three weeks is their first mentor observation. They'll do another in January and another in March. So they'll get observed with confidential feedback from their mentors three times. They'll complete that class profile while they'll really get to learn more about each student in the classroom. And this is the main thing they gotta select, which is creating their, their goals. They're doing, they're gonna assess themselves at the beginning, middle, and end in terms of their progress for their individualized learning plan. They're gonna, they have to do at least for three professional growth experiences for this and come up with a reflection at the end and collect evidence along the way. And here's our meeting log and summary forums for our weekly mentor meetings. So moving on to recruitment. So we really want to make sure that we get the best mentors possible for our candidates. So what we've done since I've been here is we've created the Mentor Interest Training Meeting, which is to try to get a larger pool of qualified candidates interested and applying for the positions during that meeting. What I'll go, I'll go over what the program is, what are the responsibilities, et cetera, how to navigate the Google Workspace, because that's critical for success in this program, what their time commitment and calendar is, and then ultimately, how we, how the selection criterion process works. That's just a copy on the right side of the employment opportunity that goes out, which reiterates this and makes them official in their process. Steering. So every year we have, in around April, we have a meeting with Culver City. So all of our administrators, we bring candidates and mentors with us. Dr. Stam, I think you attended this last year, um, in Culver City. And we, we go through our survey data. So we have to do an, a year-end administrator survey, where all the site administrators fill out a survey. The candidates do a midterm and end-of-year, as do mentors. And we look through all of this data to find out where are we at in our program? What's working? We do a stoplight analysis. So we have our green light, our yellow light, our red light. What's working? What can we do better? What do we really need to do better? And from there, we, we guide and we change what our program needs to become. So I also have weekly check-ins with Culver City. So every Monday I have a Zoom meeting with them. Yesterday I was lucky enough to see them in person. We want to extend our participation in the cluster meetings. So I've been able to attend our cluster meetings for the last two years and get our, um, our participation in the professional development as well. So last year they had a in-all-day professional development session in Walnut Valley, where Dr. Stam also attended, along with Ms. Alitzer back there. So they were with me for the day where we were, it was all the CTIP leaders within Greater Los Angeles. Like I said before, we really want to grow the pool of mentors to make sure that we have more leadership opportunities for those that want them and really utilize data to refine and improve the program. And ultimately, we want to be compliant with the accreditation timeline. There's been a big pause in that through COVID, so we actually get additional bonus years with our accreditation cycle. So, um, but we want to make sure each year that we are on track. So what are the lessons learned coming here? So one is to get all the calendar dates well in advance. So my, my first year here, it was, it was make it up in, in August and, and figure it out. So now we've got everything set by May at least for the, for the entire year. We introduce the mentor interest, like I said, in the training meeting to get a larger pool of those interested. We define our expectations in our interest form in our mentor application. We want to set all our deadlines, at least one full day prior to the colloquium, so we know if someone's not gonna make it, which hasn't happened thankfully. We've got, we've got time to adjust and work on that. We want to adjust the PD in our seminars. So this is one thing we talk about with our mentors that we saw from their survey. So we really want to, rather than just opening up to a lot of different topics that candidates are interested in, what we want to do is utilize their strengths and interests and lengthen those sessions from our mentors. So this year we focused in on two really quality professional development topics that we can use our seminars this year with our mentors to really lead a more fruitful, better learning experience for the candidates. Like I said earlier, is to really personalize and brand their experience. And lastly, cookies over cake. So that's kind of the induction program in a nutshell. I did want to invite briefly up Dr. Stam here, who is gonna share a little bit about her mentor experience. So thank you, Dr. Stam. It was very strategic for us to get her to do the CGI as well.
Hello again. I did not expect my mentee to be here. I probably would not have written her a love letter if I had known she would be here. But Justine, this one's for you, so. When Dr. Sherman called and asked if I would be interested in mentoring a new science teacher at Hawthorne Elementary School, I of course said yes, but internally panicked because we didn't really share a common grade or subject or even a common school site. So I was like, what in the world are we going to talk about? This is my first mentoring experience. I do not want to mess this up. But immediately upon meeting Ms. Justina Litzler, I knew that this would easily be one of the most rewarding and beneficial for me experiences in my ten-year teaching career. Justina Litzler truly is one of those generational talents that reminds you why you got into teaching. So this truly is a two-way interaction. I, of course, am helping Justine with the paperwork, the logistics, drafting parent emails, things like that. But she is constantly teaching me new teaching strategies and ways to keep that spark alive in the classroom. I think it's really easy to forget that newer teachers have just gone through an intense amount of training and they, more than any one of us, actually know what the new research is out there and what we should be trying in our classrooms. So that, that training, that passion, coupled with mentors' experiences, really does provide great learning outcomes for all of our students. I don't think it's any surprise either that teaching can be incredibly, can be incredibly isolating and that that isolation can sometimes lead to attrition. So this process also has allowed me not only to get to know my horseman community, but also the El Rodeo family and therefore the Beverly Hills community as a whole. And so I am very confident that without this experience, I would not know or feel as close to half the people I know now. So that alone has been incredibly beneficial for me. It doesn't hurt either that Dr. Michael Sherman, I think anyone in here that knows him, is one of the most communicative and organized people. I mean, his Google Drive is something to be envious of. So he makes this experience incredibly easy. I keep saying incredibly. He makes this experience very easy for all new mentors, returning mentors, mentees, anybody that joins this process. He makes sure that you are being guided through the whole time and you have someone there to lean on. He is there full-time, anything you need. He makes this process really easy for all members. So thank you for all that you do, Dr. Sherman. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of paperwork. I think we spend the first twenty minutes of all of our check-ins just talking about your, your worksheets and your documents and everything and admiring them. So thank you for what you do. Thank you, Justine, for being an incredible teacher. And thank you for hiring such wonderful teachers like Justine into our district that make our students the best that they could be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone have any last minute comments about the last segment? Okay. We're gonna move on to public comment and we will start with Preston Joseph. Preston, you have three minutes.
I taught Justine as well. So I'm sure she's an amazing student. I'm sure she's an amazing teacher. All right, three minutes. Well, I'm from West Georgia, so I could turn one minute into six. So I better speak quickly here. Good evening and thank you for your time. My name's Preston Joseph and I'm a social studies teacher at Beverly Hills High School. I want to first acknowledge and praise the board's decision to pass a more restrictive cellphone policy last year. Outside of a few school districts passing new policy, I see little help from adults in charge. Tonight though, I'm speaking directly to the parents of Beverly Hills. Your kids are desperate for limitations. I have an eighth grade son who doesn't have a cellphone and is not permitted on social media. He's happy, he's safe, and he's thriving. And when I discuss the why of this limit with him, the first thing I always say is, because I love you so much. It's, I also have jokingly tell him, it's my student's fault you don't have a cellphone. And I know and see too many kids to ignore the negative impact of screens. Deep down, every parent knows this too, but we just keep allowing it. Parents, stop waiting for someone else to step in. Big tech does not have your child's best interests at heart and Congress is on their payroll. It's time for us parents to set strong limits to protect our kids and their developing brains. Your kids probably won't hug you and say thank you and imposing restrictions will likely be met with some pushback. But such is the case with an addiction of any kind. For my conversations with students, they want and need help. Over the past two years, I've conducted an informal survey with my seniors on their daily screen time use. And here's some of the results. Last year, forty-seven percent clocked in at five-plus hours a day. This year, seventy percent, five-plus hours a day. hours a day. 70%, excuse me, 20% of those are over seven hours a day, with way more than a few at 10-plus hours per day. And these do not include time on laptops or other devices. And this is more than half their waking time on their devices. Do you know your child's screen time? I am concerned, and you should be too. And it's not just about social media. I'm seeing more disturbing behavior from our older students, especially the boys, day trading stocks, gambling online, and then there's the issue of porn addiction that no one wants to talk about. If you're thinking, it's not my kid, look again. Our kids are more antisocial and depressed. They stay up way too late. They struggle to focus, and they're addicted to the infinite scroll of TikTok. There's no substitute for human connection, and I encourage you to have a tough and honest conversation with your kids. I'm betting you'll find that they have reasonable solutions, like time limits, screen time-free play dates, and no phones in the bedtime, in the bedroom after bedtime. It's not too late to push back, and I appreciate you listening, and I hope this sparks conversations within the community for collective action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have someone on Zoom. Dr. Rochelle Hickock, also on screen time use. Is our Zoom being queued up? Oh, there she is. Hello. Good evening. You have three minutes.
Hi. My name is Dr. Psychologist, and I see many children and families.
Can you speak a little louder? Sorry. So we can all hear you. Okay.
Okay. I'm a, my name is Dr. Rochelle Hickock, and I see many children and families. I have for many years. I know, so what I'm here to talk about is screen time and the implementation in this school district. I'm really happy to hear about CGI, and hopefully that will be a substitute for the ST and I-ready math programs that are being forced upon our children, starting in elementary school. You know, just because we need to get those test scores really high, right? Because it's really going to be important for them in 15 years. So, you know, there's a lot of talk on the WhatsApp groups about having their elementary school children needing to, being forced to bring these computers home daily, having no ability to monitor these computers, these devices. These parents feel completely defeated and unheard. I'm not going to give up. And hopefully, that as a parent group, eventually we will be heard. So I'm talk, I know you guys have been presented many and many times over with the information, the research, the actual research out there. I think someone on the Board of Pediatrics actually came and spoke. I know you have lots of parents speaking about this all the time. I'm actually want to present some, some clinical information that I've experienced in my practice over the many years that I have seen children. I've seen many children, actually, for the one reason of these computer programs in class and homework. It sounds really funny, maybe, to people who haven't experienced them. So I really challenge and urge all of the board members and everybody who has supported these programs to actually be a third grader, fourth grader, or fifth grader, and do all the math in the way they're supposed to do it, for like, three weeks, and see how you guys feel. I'm feeling there's a disconnect between the people who are purchasing the programs, the people who are needing to implement these programs, which are the teachers, and then the children who are forced to participate in these computer programs. So I just want to talk about the clinical data and across the board, what I hear from kiddos, especially between the ages of seven and 15. Children start feeling hopeless. There's a depression. They don't want to go to school. And these are literally because they're telling me, oh, I can't stand that math program. I can't stand it. And it doesn't have to be I-ready or ST math, right? There's many, I treat kids in many different schools. It's really sad. There's a lot of tears. There's a lot of feeling of hopelessness, helplessness, that the, you know, saying, my teacher doesn't care. I have to do this. Nobody is listening to me. Nobody understands how frustrating this is.
Dr. Hickock, I'm sorry, it's been three minutes. But we, I don't know if you heard our timer.
No, I can't hear it.
Okay, sorry. We definitely heard, heard you, and thank you very much. I think that is it for public comment. Okay. Consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item 10E.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, but we want to talk about 10E.
Yeah, who pulled it? We need to make a motion. We need to make a motion to discuss it.
I'll make a motion to discuss item 10E, which is the approval agreement with Alejandra Rodriguez, board-certified behavior analysis analyst.
I'll second the motion. I brought this, does anybody else want to speak to this? Go ahead. I brought this up because I was asked about who would be available, who would be getting the services of this person. At the time, they asked, would it only be special editor peoples with IEPs? I thought it would be for anybody who needed it in the district, but of course, it was earmarked for that. But anybody who needs it can avail themselves of the certified analyst, behavioral analyst. And I, I wasn't sure of the answer, so I'm bringing that up tonight.
That's correct. The BCBA serves all students on the campus. They provide services to students. The service is listed on students' IEPs directly, but they also support the site administrators. They train instructional assistants to implement behavior intervention plans. And this particular contract is to replace someone who is currently out on maternity leave. So we have services that we are obligated to provide by law that we are not able to provide at this time.
This is not a new position. This is continuing, a renewal of a very different person.
It's just, it's just filling in a maternity leave.
I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that this was not.
It's not new.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to reports. Student board member report. Remy. There we go. Very nice.
So student board report. So last week, I discussed about how there was Club Rush at Beverly High, and these are just photos I want to share with you about the success of it. As you can see, we have Jewish Club, DECA, Service Learning, Civics Community Club. Our Medical Science Academy has its own club, which they donate the monies that the, from the fundraisers, and the money they get, they donate to UCLA Child Life, and some other clubs you can see here. Oh, here. There's Theater Arts Club, Drama Club, and Robotics, everything. So it was a great success on our campus. Food fair. So ASB threw the first food fair of the school year during lunch last Thursday, and seniors sold Prince Street Pizza, juniors sold Boba Time, sophomores sold Chick-fil-A, and freshmen Cinnabon and Auntie Anne's Pretzels. Many students enjoy this day at our school because it offers a different variety of food at lunch, and it's a great way to raise money for all the grade levels. Last year, it was only once a semester, but this year, I believe it's going to be two times per semester, which allows students to get, I mean, allows the grades to raise a lot more money, and ultimately help us for the prom or the other events we can throw for our students. Here are some more photos of the students enjoying the different types of food offered. The Dynamics of Opioid Addiction panel was, occurred last Friday, and educated students about the dangers of drug abuse, its effects, and ways to combat it. The meeting was highly informative, empowering students to confidently say no to drugs while sharing real-life stories from individuals who have faced addiction. Tiffany Davis helped set up this whole process alongside with Colby Gialdian, and it was a great success. I was luckily enough able to attend this meeting, and I really enjoyed hearing the stories, how impactful it is for all, to hear, and so grateful for my life and the circumstances I live in. And it really touches deep, and I hope it made a great impact on the rest of the students. At BVMS, they finally opened up their student store, and students can spend those hard-earned four-court tickets, and they had almost 100 students visit during lunch on Wednesday. So you can see how it's a great pop-up for all the students. Everyone loves it, and it's always, it's going to get them used to when they come to the Beverly with the student store at Beverly. They also had, on Friday, BVMS teamed up with the Hispanic Heritage Club to host Latin music on the reading green while they played Lotteria, which is like a Spanish game of bingo. And you can see here, the students playing, enjoying during lunch, and just having fun doing these different activities. At El Rodrigo Elementary, they had multiple things, like the Kind Assembly and Respect the Game assemblies for the fourth and fifth graders. Peter Brown, author of Wild Robot, visited the school, and BHEF lunch activities. Here, you can see some photos of the different students and the different activities they were doing. And you can see the POTS of Leadership lectures they received, and the author introducing them, him to themselves, to all of them, and some Lego activities over here. Horseman. So this week, Horseman held its first bedtime stories event. Organized by the PTA, students and their families were invited to gather in the library for a fun evening of reading together. Many kids came in their pajamas, bringing blankets and bean bags from home, creating a cozy atmosphere. The music teacher, Judith Chan, was a special guest reader, captivating everyone with her stories. After her five student readers took their turn to the big chair, sharing stories with the kids and parents. It was a lovely event that celebrated the joy of reading and family time. As you can see here is a video. The sound doesn't play, but she's singing along with the reading, and many of the students dressed in their pajamas, as you can see, in such a cute activity, and I know many of those students loved it. In addition, at Horseman, there is rehearsals for the elementary choir, led by the same teacher, and students from both El Rodrigo and Horseman auditioned to join the choir, and they now meet after school to prepare for their upcoming concert in May. The enthusiasm and dedication of these young singers make each rehearsal a joyful experience as they work together to create beautiful music. And here's a video of them singing, but I wish you can hear them actually singing. But it was a great, I loved hearing it. I can show you it on the side if you guys would want. But ultimately, a great success in all four schools, and it's just been wonderful. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go around.
Thank you, Remy. Stellar as usual. And I, could you also send that to the deck, to the board? So when I report to the Human Relations Commission, some of those will be helpful.
Thank you, Remy. I, I first wanted to know if you, when you make the time to go to the other schools.
So I contact the principals of each school, so I'm not able to go because of my schedule as well. But they're, they send me the videos, the principals, like Ms. Kaber and the Horseman principal all help me great, and Mr. Waters, of course. They all help me tremendously with giving me all this information that I can share to you, and the videos and photos.
That's great that you're in touch with those principals, too.
Thank you.
Great. And then did you get the additional seating for the high school you were looking for?
Oh, no, I think it's still on its way, though.
Dr. Braggie?
It's in my report.
Thank you.
Again, Remy, a delightful report, very informative. And I just want to ask you something. On the opioid presentation, was that open to all students, or were only a certain, I mean, just, was all students didn't see it? Only, was it then announced later that they could see it on, it was taped, and that they could, has it been announced like that?
Yeah, it was live. It was on KBEF, so I also, and now it's uploaded on KBEF, so anyone can watch it themselves. I was able to go to the event because my teacher for the Medical Science Academy, Ms. Lynch, she brought us there because this was former Colby Gialdian's project for the MSA. So since he's an alumni of MSA, she had us come there and watch the panel. And another class, I'm not sure what class it was, but also was able to attend the meeting. But yeah, KBEF filmed it, so any student is able, with their parents, anyone can go watch it on there.
Well, the reason I mention that, that the Health and Safety Commission knew about it yesterday, when I met them, and they wanted to know about it, and I was unaware that it had, until just now. I knew about it yesterday, but now I saw it in action, and I want to thank you again. And they now know how they can access it. So I thank you again. And again, very complete report. And I want to compliment the, as I think you already did, that you get the information from the principals at the schools, and they're very cooperative in sharing and bringing out the highlights. And I think that's wonderful. So I want to thank them also.
Thank you.
Not much to add, just a great job as usual, and thank you so much. We now move on to our superintendent report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stern, and good evening, everyone. As we normally do, we'd like to start off with our recognitions and acknowledgements. It is National Hispanic Heritage Month, which has an interesting time period, which goes from September 15th to October 15th. Also, it is Library Card Sign-up Month. We have a lot of our classroom teachers and our elementary schools and middle school that have a very strong partnership with our library. This is a time where it's free of charge, so we encourage all of our students and residents in the community to sign up for their library card. And this is also on here because I think that we've reached a really nice turning point. And so five years ago, the board had talked about just our branding and this opportunity, so that, that when people saw what we were sharing in the community, it had that look and feel of a private school, and also that it would be recognizable, that somebody would be able to look at something and say, that's from the Beverly Hills Unified School District. And so what's happening now that we're seeing, which is really kind of cool, is that even with the library in the city, they're, they're sending out using our logos, our, our information, instead of developing their own, which really shows that partnership. And, and I just want to give some kudos to our school district and for people following the branding guide, because people, people look at what we're sharing, and they're saying, why would I ever recreate this? This is really good. And they're actually sending that information out. A couple of weeks ago, on Patriot Day for 9/11, I just want to thank the Board of Education. We had very many people attended. So it was a city celebration. Remy, thank you for making time to be there with all of your practice schedules and homework. It's a really nice ceremony that they have, and it's well-attended, and it's just really something to be proud of, to be able to attend these ceremonies. They blocked off part of Rexford, right in front of City Hall, and it was just, it was just a beautiful time and memorable event. And on the right side, just some things coming up. Yesterday was a very successful day of wellness with the city of Beverly Hills and the many programs that they have going on in the city. Coming up next is next night, which is on Saturday. Just another opportunity for us as a school community to join our greater community. And it's just, it's a really nice, it's a block party, it's fun, it's laid-back. We always have the best attendance at these events. So please join us. We're very excited to have you. It's just a fun opportunity for us to see our students and our parents in another light outside of our school walls, out in the community. Just in case, Beverly Hills, the Emergency Preparedness Fair is coming up in September on the 29th. And just a quick, this is, the warning system, this is what we're working with, with the city to, don't be alarmed and disturbed when you hear an alarm. So we're helping the city pass that word. Talked about next night, that street festival. Can't wait to see you there. Also, through, through our student services, through digital safety, bullying. through our student services, through digital safety, bullying, it's a parent university, kind of a different spin. And we're talking about that partnership, much like Mr. Joseph when he was talking about like talking with parents, pleading with, with parents. This is that opportunity to do that. To have an opportunity, let's talk with experts. This is a little bit different because it's not just through the city, it's through our own school district. We'd love to see you there. It is going to be on the 26th, so this Thursday.
Thursday night.
Yes, hope to see you there. We saw many of you at Beverly Hills Reads. Thank you to Dr. Seaman, Dr. Margot with the commission. This has been such a great event for us to bring the community together. And look at reading a common novel and then have that author come. We read We Were the Lucky Ones and Georgia Hunter actually came in. And it was an incredible presentation. It was so well-attended. I mean, hundreds of people. And it was a great opportunity for us to come together, have some discussions, talk with the author, get some insights from the author that we wouldn't maybe have if we just read the book on our own. So it was a great way to pull everyone together and just highly attended. So can't wait for the next one. They seem to get bigger and better all the time. Coming up is another annual event. This is in recognition of a student here in BHUSD, Mason. And please, if you haven't registered for the event, Not Today Cancer Run, Walk, please come. It's a very quick way for the community to get together on October 6th coming up. And it's just a very exciting time. We've moved this venue many times. It was Roxbury one year, it was at Beverly Vista Middle School last year, now we're going to be, the start and end will be at El Rodeo. Just a great opportunity for the communities to come together, recognize and honor Mason, and also supporting Not Today Cancer. Thank you, BHEF, for our innovative teacher grants. So a shout out to our teachers, Alexis Crane, Leanna Castanon, Alyssa Langivan, Nancy McCosey, Karen Legola at the high school, Jennifer Hegley at the high school, Kathy Corinium, and I think it's, and I'm going to probably get the name wrong, but Wood Bonchert, and Marla Weiss and Sue Yovatek at the high school for their innovative teaching grants. And thank you to BHF for sponsoring innovation in our school district. On the right-hand side is a really special event that we were able to attend last Friday, honoring a Teacher of the Year. And you know, there's different levels of Teacher of the Year, but the top Teacher of the Year is that group of teachers in LA County that is your top 16. And congratulations to Mr. Jesse Braun, who is actually one of the top 16, which is the highest level. So we were able to celebrate with him, his wife, his parents. Dr. Stern was there. And we will have an opportunity to honor and recognize Mr. Braun at our next school board meeting. They did embargo all of that information. It was top secret until Friday, but now that the information's out. So we look forward to having that opportunity to introduce to you Mr. Braun at our next board meeting. Just really quickly, some of the projects that we've been talking about have really come to fruition. And I just want to thank our MNO team with Mr. Haas and also our construction team with Mr. Karat and our business services team with Dr. Hasty, really coming together to now see these projects come to full fruition. And as you can see in this picture, our shade structure that we've been talking about for the last year was a true partnership with our PTAs. And so it's really nice to see how these, the quality of the workmanship and how this is benefiting our students and staff. So a quick picture of, on the left-hand side, that's our TK area at Horseman, which really provides an incredible amount of shade. If you remember, over a year ago, we thought we had, we had hopes and dreams that those, those trees planted right there, that that would be helpful. And in theory, that was going to be a great thing, but it wasn't enough. And so we worked with the PTA, with the administration, the board, to find those funds to provide adequate shade for our youngest learners at Horseman. And it looks just so nice. It's just really great. And on the right-hand side is, that's a new play area that was put up for our preschool program. And so that is up and that's ready to go. And it's just very exciting to have an area, it's gated off, it's safe, it's new. And we're excited to be able to add a play area to our playgrounds. There's another shot there. Also in Construction Services, this is an area at El Rodeo, if you remember, there was an area that it looked nice, but it wasn't as practical to have as a play area. So this is the TK K area. And if you remember in past slides, that there was a separation, there was some mulch in an area and it looked really nice. But as far as having a designated play area, it was, kids would be going back and forth and it just, it was muddy. It wasn't in the best condition for us to use a play area. We've heard from board members who have said that we need to increase our, our play areas, some of the equipment that we have. And that's an ongoing issue. And I want the Board of Education to know that we hear you. We hear from our parents that we need to continue to, you know, we're living in this space and that we are, are now phasing into those improvements that we need to make. This is a school that has been open now for, you know, just over a month. And we're soon finding that we know those areas improvement, play is one of them. And so we've made some changes already here and we look forward to coming back to you very soon to present some new ideas for you as far as some play areas. Keep in mind, there's about 640 students at El Rodeo. Just a picture on the right-hand side, just, you know, little details now that are popping up, just like with the shield on the sign. It just looks so, so professional. Every school is impacted by modernization and change, even if it's something minor. The doors at BVMS, just modernizing those doors, if you remember in the past, they were really old and not functional. And they were hooked up to an alarm system and were having all kinds of issues. And so those are slowly being, being improved and updated, as well as even just as simple as a coat of paint. And that's at the SDC and matching and doing a really good job of making sure that we pick the right areas. And it just pops. If you go look at it in person, you'll be pretty impressed. That exterior painting that's happening all over the school district is just, just what we needed to make it look clean and fresh. And we're excited to be able to continue to do that work. As we continue with some other work, the building a restroom at the high school, just some renovations that are, that are continuing and finishing, that have been long into the planning. The tables, Mrs. Manicherry and to Remy, you know, these were moved over from Hawthorne, which is why they have the yellow shades, but those, we're not going to keep the yellow at the high school. But we wanted to make sure that there were places where students could sit. We're still waiting for more. And a lot of what we're experiencing is the orders and getting some delays, but we're aware that students still need places to sit at lunch. And they're coming and they're a few weeks out, but they will be coming really quickly. So, but these are, these are a great interim and our students use them. And so we're excited to be able to at least have those and we're able to move those. And they're, again, they're movable, so they'll be moving back shortly. The refresh to the kitchen, again, if you walk into the cafeteria at the high school, it looks so different just because of the fresh paint, the floor, the lights, like the updating that we've done, it looks, it looks like a different place. It looks like there's just been, you know, some serious renovation and modernization there. Some continuing summer improvement projects, some small things that you may not have noticed. In front of Building A is that that was not ADA accessible and now that is, now that's all finished. So this just goes to show you here, this was being finished, is finished now. It's beautiful and accessible. And also, even with our swim gym, our iconic swim gym that, you know, we're having to, to make some moves with the Conheim and some of the work that's going to be done with Building C, which is, we keep saying Building C, but it's the new Conheim, that we do, do some relocation here as far as our boilers and some of our, some of our operational equipment that we have. Have to get pretty creative. At the opportunity to attend, we have a really great relationship with the Federation, the Los Angeles Federation, the Jewish Federation. And I talk a lot about my Israel trip. I still talk about it all the time with everybody. And we have a great relationship with them. This is the festival, the Nova Festival exhibit that is still happening. And it's, it's a movement, it's a, it's a, an opportunity, it's all over the country. This is traveling so that people can get a better understanding of what happened at the Nova Music Festival on October 7th. And it is set up for the public to, to, to view. These are pictures of when I was actually there and I got to experience this personally. But this event is really put together through videos, hundreds of videos that, that they've collected from personal cell phones. It's like everybody had a documentary of what happened on October 7th. And they were able to share their story, how tragic that morning was. And it's a pretty rough exhibit, but it really shows the authenticity of that surprise attack from so many people's perspective. And it's, it's riveting if you have not had the chance to see it. So recommend that if you get the chance, please go see it. I'm going to end with our communication, just for our neighbors, if people are watching at home and want to jot that down. You know, there's so much going on in our schools, not only during the day, but in the evenings and also on our weekends, that, that please stay updated on what's happening. Because we are a seven-day-a-week, there's so many things happening that we want to share with you, what's going on, whether it's construction-related or whether there's a program, even like when we're having our, our Not Today Cancer Run or any type of event that's going to impact the community, please sign up. We want to tell you about it in advance. And that is my report for tonight.
All right, excellent. Let's go around. Comments, questions?
Thank you, Dr. Bregge, for updating us about those chairs. And yeah, those chairs on the patio are really like a great, I love them there. Like I know many students love sitting there and it's a great place to have some shade, too. If you don't want to sit in that cafeteria, you want to be in the outside atmosphere, you still have some shade under those umbrellas. But, and I've seen the cafeteria as well. It looks like a brand-new cafeteria with all the fresh coat of paint can really change a lot. So it all looks great and I'm looking forward to seeing more completions throughout the school.
Awesome. Thank you, Remy.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Quick question. Are they actually replacing the umbrellas?
We will replace the umbrellas. So those will go back to, we're going to repurpose those umbrellas.
Okay.
Oh yeah, we're, we will use them.
Okay.
We have plans that I'll share with you.
Yellow is one of our program's colors, so.
It is.
We should be okay representing, too.
It is. But we, we have some bigger plans.
Okay.
For, for those umbrellas.
I'm glad that we have big plans for umbrellas.
Yep.
Fills my heart with.
Can't get enough shade.
Apparently after this report, no. We are the shadiest.
We are.
District in the state.
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Marcus?
Great report again, as usual, Dr. Bregge. I have only one question. Is there any plan yet at any time to observe October 7th in the district to the, for the problem that occurred that day, or the horrible thing that happened that day? Is there any, has there been any plan at any time yet to observe that day is what I'm trying to say?
I'm actually going to answer this question. We, we have something in the works, actually that I, something I'm putting together. And there'll be more details within like the next day or so. But you're absolutely right. We're coming upon the one-year, I don't want to say anniversary, but one-year mark of such a horrific massacre. And it occurred to me that there definitely needs to be some memorializing about this. And I'm glad, very timely that you brought it up. And I will be speaking further about that.
Will that be district-wide or is that just the high school? Or how are we, are we going to be?
District-wide.
And if I may, also, I know that the Jewish club at our school is hosting an October 7th speaker on that day to come and speak to all the students as well. So that's a great place where many students I know are going to sign up and come listen.
Do you know when that is, like?
It's going to be on October 7th.
Right, but you know what time by chance?
I think during lunch.
Okay.
And there are many individual teachers that are also doing something.
In the media center?
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm sure there will be a lot of sentiment, a lot of feelings, speakers to, to think about that day.
Yep.
Anything else? We missed you. You wanted to comment on Dr. Bregge?
Oh, no. His report? Thank you.
Okay.
For those updates.
Sure.
And really, there has been so much going on through the course of the summer.
Yeah.
Based on the decision-making of the board with your guidance from last year. And to see all of those pieces come to completion is amazing. And so I just want to thank you, Ken and Will and Dr. Hasty and Dr. Guzman, who's not with us, and the Fonder Solari team. Dr. Bregge, it looks amazing, really, all the facilities improvements. So thank you for all of it and, and of course for those heavy lifts.
Yep. And thank you for the, the ongoing communication. Because like areas like the, the play areas at El Rodeo that were mentioned, we're, you know, spending the last month and having students use that. Like we also see some of the things that you're reporting and also the parents, that we need increased play areas.
Yeah.
And so that's really great for us to be able to plan. And we're working with Ms. Kaber to see, you know, different areas that we can use and how that would be beneficial to our students.
Great. And some of those pieces can happen with bikes or with hopscotch or with, you know what I mean?
Yes, we were just talking about that yesterday.
Yeah. It's not necessarily construction, you know?
Right.
Although I'm sure that might help with regard to the planters, you know, because that's a big piece. But I feel like there were a lot of little pieces that were present at Hawthorne that they may have left for the preschool program.
Yeah.
Which is understandable.
We did.
So, yeah, I think that it could easily and not easily be addressed.
And we've made orders because we didn't want to take those away, but we've made some additional orders for us. But I also want to say just thank you to my team, too, because they're just as visual as I am. And Monday morning, we spent about 90 minutes actually walking around the play areas to actually see which, what areas can be improved. Everything from, from our students to the JPA and AYSO and how we can support them as they're going to be starting, you know, kicking off their season there.
And then also the straight, the shade structures at Horseman look fantastic.
Yeah.
I would say that they look better than I had anticipated from the renderings.
They do.
It didn't do it justice. But maybe soon you can provide us an update on the other fence, the front gate that's going in.
At Old Horseman.
Yeah, I would love to hear more about that, just to make sure the access is safe for pickup and drop.
Yep, I can do that at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. Um, we now move into, um, a public hearing and approval of resolution 2024, 2025, oh five, sufficiency of instructional materials. And I am asked to read this. Um, the public hearing and approval of resolution 2024, 2025, oh five, sufficiency of instructional materials is now open at 6:40 PM. The governing board of the Beverly Hills Unified School District in compliance with the Education Code, section 60119, is required to hold a public hearing on or before the eighth, eighth week of school that certify that each pupil in the district has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials in each subject area that are consistent with the content and cycles of the curriculum framework adopted by the State Board of Education. The public was invited to email their questions to Dr. Dustin Seaman. Dr. Seaman, have you received any questions or comments?
I have not.
The Board of Education has heard your comments and we thank you very much for your input. So we will wait.
I will make a motion for the approval of the resolution 2024 dash 2025 dash zero five, sufficiency of instructional materials.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries. The public hearing is now closed at 6:41 PM.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the acceptance and filing of a notice of completion and release of retention for the ER additional landscape project with Garza Construction.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I will make a motion for the award and approval of agreement with district-wide security camera design services, the RFQ dash slash P 2023 dash 2024 dash zero zero eight with IMEG Consulting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Beep, 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 beep. Just go back, 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 back up a bit. Um, approval of the district-wide security cameras. When you're talking about district-wide security cameras, are you referring to any specifically, uh, campus or is this a new setup that's going in?
Uh, it's for all campuses. So Beverly Vista, the high school and also, um, there's not much to do at El Rodeo, but Beverly Vista and high school mostly.
Well, when the El Rodeo was finished, didn't we have that in place?
Yeah, I, I wish Mark was here to explain the scope a little bit better, but yeah, I don't think there's anything at El Rodeo. It's just, uh, the high school and Beverly Vista.
They're going to look at, good evening. They're going to look at all the sites. So if there is any deficiencies, they are going to bring it up and it's up to the district to decide if they want to make any changes or not. El Rodeo, you are absolutely correct. Everything is installed and in place.
Is this going to be connected to the command center then?
Yes.
It'll all be tied into the command center?
Yes. It's basically to amend the existing security cameras. There are areas in the high school that still doesn't have cameras and like other schools. So they are going to look at all of that. They are going to hear the needs from the security team. And they are going to just come up with a solution based on those needs.
This will also include the design for the PA system, upgrading that as well and vape detectors in the bathrooms.
Is that for the high school and Beverly Vista?
Yes, they're going to look at all the schools.
I just had a question. Mrs. Marcus, were you?
I'm finished.
Okay. I just had a question about the source of funds. I, and I learn something every day. I didn't realize that Measure BH had a separate technology fund. I thought that it was all in one. So who designated the tech? I know we have a tech fund going forward because we're anticipating the bond dollars are going to come to an end. But it, this means that this was allocated already, for example, Mr. Solari in your budget.
Since we are on board, there's always a set aside technology. Because your language of your board had the technology, there was a set aside amount for the technology. And this is going to be charged against that.
And security?
Yes.
So this was both?
Security and technology.
The bond included both security and technology.
Yes, that I, that I'm with you. I just had never captured that it was subdivided.
Uh, I think that was the decision for, because of the language of the board. And again, the budget always was defined that way.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Look.
Okay, so we, um, all in favor?
We voted on it already.
Okay.
Yeah, we voted on it.
I thought she stopped us so we can have a discussion. No.
Well, we all said aye.
And then she's, okay.
But if you, I don't know if you can retake the vote, but you're welcome to.
No, I think we all are in favor. Okay. Okay, I'll make a. Jay? No. Okay.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the agreement with make-ready site demo guarantee. Maximum price number one for Swinburne builders for the high school building C project.
I'll second.
I have a question.
Okay.
On this. So months ago, we had talked about when this started coming up for these approvals, that we were going to have a solution to the egress issue with the new parking lot.
Yes.
Do we have a solution to the?
We are working toward that. We have a schematic design from DLR. Actually, I was, I had a meeting with them last week and we are going to work with Dr. Bregge to set up a meeting with the city and present the solution to the city. So yes, there is a design in progress.
And this, this particular motion tonight is actually, it's, is it for any physical work or is it just prep work?
It's physical work. They are going to start with demolition and preparation of the site for basically construction of the retaining boards.
Okay, I would have sincerely appreciated, as I had asked, to have that egress plan completed before we move forward on this project as is.
Sure.
So, um, I know this is probably a timely issue for you guys, but, um, I, I don't know if I'm going to support this because I really, it was important to me to make sure that parking lot egress plan with Olympic and Heath and getting the security through campus.
This is not going to have any impact of that item since this project is complete.
But for me it did. So, because we took the parking out of this building. So it did, it did mean something to me and I don't want to patch this and Band-Aid it as we move along. I wanted a plan and I was clear about that when we did this. So this is not a surprise. Um, before we touch this building or start or commit to any construction, I wanted to be sure that we were going to be able to move people through campus securely, first of all, because it's going to affect, we're going to be bringing people onto campus and parking in that lot. Um, and how we're going to get them from point A to point B, uh, and, and all of the, and all of the components involved as far as ADA access, car egress and security. Um, so the fact that we don't have that plan yet concerns me because we're ready to move forward on moving with this, with this plan without the parking lot, without having a full plan in place for the other lot.
Can I ask a point of clarification? I just want to understand that I'm understanding your concern. So we're talking about, um, the new basketball athletic pavilion, which is going to go, just clarifying to make sure I understand where you're coming from, which is going to go where the current, um, tennis courts and surface lot is adjacent to the swim gym area.
Correct.
Okay. So, um, the parking that you're referring to and the egress, are you speaking about parking that is going to support this construction project for the construction folks? What parking are you referring to?
No, the, the new parking lot that was.
The ones along Olympic, the two surface lots?
Yeah, the ones where, where the oil well was.
Yes. So then what is, what is, what is it that you're seeking to be certain about?
How cars are getting in and out of that lot and not, not disrupting pedestrian traffic for the students. Because if they have to come in and out of the main entrance, they're going to cut through where students cross all the time.
So, I got you.
Secondly, how are we letting people who are not staff or students onto campus?
In the future.
In the future. How are we securing, how are we making sure that our security is in line with people coming in and off campus? Um, and, and how, how is the actual path of travel going to work from that parking lot? I, I, I have confidence that they'll be able to figure it out.
But you just want to know.
I really want to know before we started this project.
Well, I'll just say one thing. I remember when I went to Beverly High, my brother, who is older than I am, used to park where the new tennis courts are going in. That was our lot that we were assigned to. So the, the two new surface lots that are going to go on the Olympic side are not too far from where that is. And so I recall that we would come in through Heath like we all do now. We would go to the end, we would park, and then we would also exit through Heath. So are you?
It's a different, it's not being designed as a student lot. And it's being designed as a replacement lot for the one we're taking out, which does have intermittent traffic coming in and out of it all day. But usually people coming for athletic reasons, so they're, they're, it's, there's a guard there. We scan everybody that comes in, you know, they park and they either go back around to the main entrance to go in. I just, I just want to know that that has all been worked out. I'm not saying it hasn't. I'm not saying it won't. I just, we are so, um, on a trajectory of security and safety with our schools. I don't want this gaping hole to show up. And then we're all scratching our head and say, well, look, we left ourselves a hole. There's a giant access point here that we could, because it's going to, it's moving that outside Moreno access for, for people and, and because remember, we have football games, right?
Yes, I'm with you.
So that's, that's my, it's my concern. And it's, and it has been months since I had asked for this. And I was hoping we would have it finalized before we took any votes to move forward with the construction.
Well, let me, let me ask you guys a question. Are you thinking about pursuing a light on the Olympic side? Or for example, the rendering that you have now?
It's not going to be a light. It's going to be like a one-way access when you have an event. So people can get in from Olympic, park, and they can get out from the main gate. So it's.
Close it off from the south side.
Yes.
Got you. More finite.
For, for your football stadiums, that surface parking lot is going to be right adjacent to that. There is going to be a set of ramp that's going to be connected to the football stadium and it's all going to be fenced. So there is no security concern at all if you have a football, uh, and they want to use the surface parking lot in future.
But if we're queuing the entrance and, and checking people off of Olympic, then we're backing up traffic on a major thoroughfare.
We are creating actually a sidebar ramp inside that's, again, um, I didn't know that this is going to come up.
That's okay.
Bring the sketch that we have, but we are working toward resolution for all of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could we request a conditional approval based on that plan? Because I think just so we don't.
Oh, I, I don't think I was stopping my colleagues anyway. Don't worry about.
I just, on, on, you know, for you, um, and that is, we have been planning this. We actually did a walkthrough this week just to look at the flow of students and where they'll be going. We can definitely bring that back. Um, but we definitely, you know, we also want to get this approved.
Okay.
Well, that was going to be my question. If we were not to approve this tonight, how would this impact going forward and what kind of a hitch would it put in the construction and the planning?
Well, we are delaying the start of construction for building C consequently. Finish off the building at the end, finish off your swimming pool. So we have to, this is the first step of a start the building C construction project. If you decide to not to approve this, we are not going to guarantee that this is going to be complete for July of 2027.
So we need to actually get going is what you're trying to say?
Yes.
Okay, how much time do you feel it will be that we're waiting for what Mr. Margot is asking for the plan? How far are we away from getting that plan in relationship?
I just need to remind everybody, the parking lot is not going to be built till like two and a half years. But so like sometime between now and finish of this project, definitely we are going to have the city approval.
That will not impact this at all.
No.
But, okay, but let's be clear, Dr. Hasty, you were not here. Okay? When the board decided to pull out the parking lot from this building, I was vehemently against it. I understood the financial ramifications. I stated my case. I did not win. Okay? The board moved forward with pulling the parking lot and I was adamant about making sure that all the ducks were in a row on the other side of this. Yes, it's two years, three years down the line. But if we make these decisions now and we don't have it planned out, then it's going to catch us all by surprise. So that's why I was advocating to have it completed and it seems like you're on your way to doing it. So hopefully we're not going to stop it tonight. That's not my intention. My intention was just to get information prior to making the vote.
Yes, again, we are working toward that. It needs some collaboration from the city, actually. It's not all in our hand and we are going to just start meeting with the city and get the approval.
Okay.
And we can bring you that information because as Dr. Hasty said too, like we were out there actually walking it because we want to see with that path of travel, not only for our students, but also for then our, our parents going to games, um, the JPA, how are people going to be accessing that? You know, our, our fields. Um, so we can, we can absolutely do that. Um, and as far as security, same thing. We were out there looking to see, will this be an increase to security? Will this, how can we do this efficiently, safely? And so we will start gathering all of that information. We'll bring this, uh, to the board. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question about this lease to the construction company? Did you want to go ahead first, Rochelle? So, um, the way I'm thinking is that later this year, this construction is going to start. So now we're still in a pre-construction phase.
Upon this approval, basically that's the start of construction phase.
Okay, so, uh, construction would be pending ASAP. So I'm just trying to understand what's going to happen. So you guys are then therefore going to close off effective almost immediately, the four tennis courts on the one side, because these are the crosshatched areas on the map.
Yep.
So it's going to be the four tennis court, that area of the fourth tennis courts, the surface lot and the two tennis courts.
No, the two tennis courts is going to be available to the school.
Okay, that's good to know, but on the site plan, it is also crosshatched as part of the lease?
It's, it's part of the area because they need to run some utilities toward the south, but the tennis courts is going to be operational.
Got you. Okay, so then from an operational perspective, I just want to put it out there for Mr. Ellis for spring, um, tennis group. Good luck.
I know. We're working on it.
Making that arrangement. Thank you so much. Great. And then hopefully Roxbury Park being not so far away will be a good, um, a good support. And then at some point we talked about access, that's the access I thought Noah was originally referring to. So what, how are our students going to get from? Just from an operational perspective, exactly.
So we are building a temporary walkway ramp, uh, across where the fence of the, our current construction site is. So students can walk down because that's a switchback ramp also is going to be demoed. Also, we are in the process of creating like another layer of fence on the sidewalk. So they walk that ramp down and they walk on the sidewalk, which is going to be part of the school and go toward the gym and they can walk backward. But this is only between now and next school year because between now and that time, we are going to have, there is another, sorry, finished walkway, um, between building C and the future swimming pool. So that would be completed. So by the next school year, this temporary solution is going to go away too.
So good phase work.
And we'll show you that. So at the next meeting, we'll, we'll just have a, a visual and a diagram because we walked it, um, just last week, but we want you to see what that looks like.
Yeah, we have, you know, 1,200 students at the high school and they're trying to access the soccer fields, the this, the that. So I would love to know operationally, how is it going to pan out? And of course, JPA, I anticipate like, you know, um, BHBL on a weekend with hundreds of five through eight, 16-year-olds coming and going.
Is it the, the parking lot that's next to the north side of the swim gym though is leaving as a result of this? That will be gone?
Correct.
And when will you be starting that?
Uh, pending this approval right away. Yes.
Which is good. Which is good that it's moving forward.
Yep. And we'll show you what some of those plans look like and what that parking, because we've got some options that are really good, um, good for us and good for the city as well.
Thank you.
Okay, um, call for the vote. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Uh, motion carries. And we now move on to board business, uh, 2024, 2025 Board of Education Governance Handbook update. Uh, Dr. Bregge, I see you have a lot of changes with names.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, updated Board of Education Governance Handbook.
And this is something we do every couple of times a year. Uh, we will do this again after organizational meeting. Um, but with the addition of, uh, Remy and also with Mrs. Wells, uh, joining the city council. This is, we wanted to at least stay as current. We, it's been since last August. Um, I took, um, Mrs. Manichieri's, uh, way of, with the redlining, uh, which we like so that you can see very clearly the things that we're changing for transparency. Um, and then we'll do this again in December.
Mostly as I can see it, a housekeeping, uh, type of, uh, maneuver, um, thing just to keep it up to date with what's going on.
There is, but there, there may be a time when, you know, this is all the evolution of, uh, the way we do business. Um, I know over the last couple of years that we've added some language in here, um, about social media and just some, some areas. So, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, started as a template from. So, you know, it's, it's started as a template from CSBA and then it kind of grew into our own governance and reporting. But if there is something that as we move along that needs to be updated, it's all, all up for possible, you know, changes.
Thank you for the calendar on the last page. That's good to know so that we can calendar ourselves for the big strategic plan meetups.
Okay, very good. This is not a voting item.
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is. Okay. I'll make a, an approval.
I made the motion.
Okay, I'll second.
No, somebody who, who seconded it?
Rochelle, did you second?
I'm just waiting to know.
Which one are you? I didn't make a motion.
No, I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we come to Board Discussion, discussion of students dropping advanced level courses.
Do you want me to?
I don't know who put this on.
I, I asked that this be placed on the agenda.
Okay.
There seemed to have been a lot of confusion about students dropping classes and so on, especially, well, it turned out there was more than one subject area. But I, I felt that there was confusion about what the policies and the regulations were. And I would like them to be discussed so that it's, we understand when students can drop a class, what the consequences are and so on and so forth. Because I think that there's a lot of people who trying to change classes because of certain things and avoiding some of the policies or what are the regulations that are there that can, that are for it. So I really felt that this might be a time, now that the five week is over and they no longer can really drop it unless they drop it with, but there is a definite policy. And I think that it needs to be made sure. And if we need to change it for any reason, that we then look at any changes we would like to make. Because maybe there is that need. I don't know.
Well, and it's articulated though in the Norman Guide. And so, and it's consistently in like for student announcements. Because that's, that's really the audience is, you know, with, for students. And those schedule changes, it's very clear. They're very consistent about when they are. And, and we stay very consistent to upholding the, the guidelines that we have. It's, it's certainly not a policy, like a board policy, but it's more of an operational procedure guidelines at, at the school level. So it's, but it's, students know.
Well, as a result of that, I, I discovered that there were some students that were able to drop to a lower level supposedly while other kids were not allowed to drop. And there was a lot of confusion in that way. And I heard those comments. I'm not trying to dictate anything. I just feel that we need to have a consistent policy that is followed or a regulation or whatever as a, as in the booklet. That's what I'm, I found that that was not followed. There were some people who were able to make changes and others weren't. Some people were coerced into staying in the class. I, I just feel that it was not something that I would be proud of the way it was done. I felt there was a lot of inconsistency. And I wanna make sure that we look at that and we don't do it again.
Rochelle, can I ask you a question? Are you speaking to that some folks said, that teachers said, that the board said that they're not allowed? You know what I mean? That kind of a, he, he said, she said. But, but we know it's not true because we had this discussion last time in regard to the foreign language where it was clarified that it was not a board policy and that the students have five weeks. So was it perhaps that one or two people were giving some missing? The board was covering for them?
I know. I just felt that, I wanted to bring out that there is something that states what the regulations.
Okay, well, why don't we, Dustin or Dr. Breggy, if you want to, yeah, tell us.
I know you faced a lot of the requests.
Yeah, please.
Yeah. So from a communication standpoint, we start this process, and I'm just gonna go through the lengthy, is we started back in January, actually. So we will actually jump into it this January when we start with our 11th graders. And remember, we start with 11th graders and work our way all the way down from our course selection process. And during that process, we actually inform, you have your course selection in January. We start with 11th graders, move into 10th graders and so far, all the way down to the incoming fifth grade. In that, during our virtual town hall with the parents, which we do before we meet with any of the students, we inform them of that procedure of if you do have a course request change, here are the following guidelines, right? So they start the selection process during second semester of the year prior. We then do course verification during second semester of that same year where they're saying, hey, here are the following courses. We send out communication. I don't mean to point to some of those that have high school students. But then we also sent out communication for encouragement. If you needed the individual appointment with the school counselor, please set up that time during, towards the end of the school year to make sure that your courses are solidified. Because then when we go into summer, we then also communicated, we had the Swap-a-Palooza days, which was even brand new this year where we said, hey, listen, come on in. If you wanna change your schedules, you have two days where we won't even ask you any questions. Because we know it's not about, we're not holding students in courses based off master scheduling. But I know that you guys will all be mad at me if I show up and I have a class with four kids in it because they all dropped, because they all wanted to switch and do teacher shopping, which we know kids, see, I, I'm looking at you. But we're holding then students had four opportunities through communication starting in January of the previous year to make the decisions to change their elective courses. And then all the way up to week five to change their levels based on, based on, did you even meet with the teacher? And what we were doing, they weren't coerced into staying. We made students meet with the teachers to have the conversations around, are you running because you're scared? Or can you actually stay because you actually have the chops and we believe in you to do it and access the rigor? And again, even we had the conversation around world language, very few left, very few dropped. They, I think it's three, you know, the rest stayed after they had the individualized conversation with the instructor. And so, and with the school counselor. And so having these conversations, we wanna continue to encourage access to rigor. If we wanna talk about test scores and we wanna talk about US News World Report and we wanna have open access to AP, we also have to hold our students accountable for the decisions that they're committing to. Something different too, that I think is important, and I wanna thank the high school administration and our school counselors. This past year, even in second semester, we did AP informative sessions, which we hadn't done before, where every department had meetings around what the expectations were for those honors and AP level courses to make sure that the kids were making the right decisions when they made the selection, then was confirmed through course verification. And then still had one more opportunity to bail ship at the Swap-a-Palooza and did not make those decisions then. And any family that was traveling during that time and could produce travel documentation, we did allow that change based off they were out of the country for said reason. So again, I, I find it hard, I have not been approached by these conversations. I've had conversations around, can I do this? Can I, am I equipped to do it? But I always, please refer to me or Mr. Stewart or Principal Waters as well. Because it could be the middle school as well. But we'll continue. We start in January. So everyone out there, we're coming for you. Course selection starts in, yeah, January.
I understand that and I'm well aware of it. I'm, and then I wanna have this discussion with you personally about the selection in the one grade level, the, the two and 2H. And I wanna talk to you about that. But that's a discussion that I have had with Dr. Breggy. And I feel that there's a missing link here, especially with the number of kids that take that class. That my thinking is that, and I'm gonna now refer to Spanish because I'm gonna be very upfront. Spanish, we have more kids taking Spanish than any other languages, I believe, for the most part. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Some kids only wanna take two class, two years of foreign language. That's all they need. That's all they want and they stop. Okay? Then you have the kids that wanna go further. And it's at that point where they could have a 2H class instead of a two because they're gonna go on and take three or four at an AP. And those are the kids that will, and there're gonna be a lot of those kids. They want three years of language and they want the AP. So we're giving them the rigorous performance class that they need. So that, that was something that was going through my mind. And that was only because it, because we have such great, I know that in the other languages, we don't have as many kids. But in this one, we have a lot of kids, that that might have been a possibility. It's just something that I thought about and I presented it to you. And it had to do with why so many kids were changing at, they go from 2 to 3H. And that was where I was concerned. So that, just by thinking.
I just wanted to express my wholehearted and absolute support for your approach, which was, and Mr. Ellis too, where you're basically sharing with the community that if Beverly Hills Unified, school does not start on the first day of school. That's when learning starts. And our expectation for this vision and mission of excellence means that our families are expected to come back one week before school starts, that that's when ninth grade orientation happens. And following ninth grade orientation is change of, you know, classes. If there's a void or an issue with the schedule, the next day is 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade. And then there's the two days of the Swap-a-Palooza, as you call it. And the same thing happened with our tryouts wherein the week prior to the start of school, like Miracosta, like all these other high achieving, excelling programs, this is how we do it. And so what that means is that the students will come back. They will not be jet lagged on the first day of school. They will know what's happening and their rear ends will be sitting in class all day, every day, starting from day one, getting instruction. So as far as I could tell, that's the plan, right?
Correct. And that's, and that's TK through 12th grade. And so it's not even just the course election process. As we are consistently comparing ourselves to other schools, whether it be elementary or high school, chronic absentee was our big Achilles heel. And if we don't have kids here on day one participating, that even day one counts against us. And if you're not in the seat learning, what, what baffled me, and I'm oversharing now, is that in previous processes, we would allow these kids to teacher shop or change schedules, which would move, miss out on the syllabus explanation, would miss out on day one of learning. We're in block scheduling. That's a 90-minute block on day one. You're talking about the syllabus for 25 to 35 minutes max. And then you're jumping directly into lesson one. You show up lesson, you, class three or four, you're already behind. You already have an academic deficit. And then I don't, I don't blame the parents. They get frustrated, student coming home. But we, as the adults, have to also make decisions that are hard and, and supportive. We have air tutors, interventions for world language courses. We have a lot of things that we can offer as long as it's communicated to the right people. If they come to us in administration or our school counselors, we will help find a way to get out of the hole and get right back on track.
I just wanna say that I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that when we start in January to develop what they wanna do and get the classes and so on, students have to understand that the programs are gonna be built around, the offerings are gonna be built around that and that we can't have, you know, gross changes at the last. I mean, they, they need to think twice and very carefully about the offerings and what they are. So I think that's also very, and they get changes, they can make changes along the way as long as school hasn't started, for the most part.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make one suggestion, which is when you're, usually right after spring break is when you present the summer programming. And I think that might be an opportunity to share with the families that at BHUSD, we have like start week. You know what I mean? And the start week is the week before school starts. And so just so that they know that that's the expectation, that that's when tryouts are happening, that's when textbook distribution is happening, you've been forewarned. And maybe in a couple of years, we won't be accommodating international travel. You know, because the families will have had more than enough notice so they can prioritize and plan accordingly.
Yep. And we hope to get summer school information out in February this year.
Great. Thank you.
All right. With that. Okay. Any other questions or parting comments? I'm glad we spoke about that because there was definitely a lot of chatter about that.
Sorry, I was just gonna say.
It was really hard.
Yes, they did. Go ahead, Remi.
With going out of like the country or state, I personally was out of the state during summer and when textbook distribution and everything, but I received emails and my parents and I coordinated when to be back. So I, I think the system works. I think everything works. If you pay attention to the emails and everything, it should work out. But yeah, it's just, mostly the parents need to communicate and organize their schedules.
Yeah, it's a changing culture and it's communication that consistently you need to be back, not on the first day of school, but a week before.
Yep. And definitely, I just anecdotally, there, there were a lot of, you know, people I know for a variety of reasons weren't there, you know, for textbook distribution. And, you know, we can't have it both ways. If we really want educational excellence and we wanna, you know, hold standards, then there are certain things and nuts and bolts that just have to be adhered to, you know? So, thank you. Okay, that brings us to communication from the board members. Meeting reports or anything else?
I just wanted to remind you all that this Friday is the homecoming game.
Oh, yeah.
And we're going to have a pep rally that Friday at school. And then the Saturday is the homecoming dance.
Ah, okay.
I attended the Human Relations Commission meeting on the 19th. Just a brief notes, they had a report from the police department. You can watch the meeting if you wanna go into details of the report. But overall this year, crime has decreased 13%, even though July to August, it was up 38%. But overall, we're on a decline. And the response time decreased to, to, from two minutes and 39 seconds to two minutes and 17 seconds. For those, for those paying attention. The commission voted on their next civility award, which is, remember, last year was awarded to the BHEF's Tina Wiener.
Oh, yeah.
So they're, they're gonna be setting up the ceremony for that presentation. And they started working on their kindness week, which is in February. That's the next big event that the commission sponsors is kindness week. And thank you, K. Bev, as always.
Thank you. I attended the Beverly Hills Reads event with Georgia Hunter and I thought it was amazing. And I wanted to thank you all. I, I was not able to attend originally and I was really glad that I made it happen. And actually, there were three, as Mr. Ellis calls them, lady Normans, sitting behind me. And I thought that it was fantastic that our high schoolers were also included in this with their classroom reading. And they were just so fascinated to be able to see Ms. Hunter's pictures on the wall from her traveling and so on and so forth. So thank you for that. Mrs. Marcus and I attended the Health and Wellness Committee. And I'm really glad I attended this one because I actually learned something about why we've been hearing so much about the health and wellness and the food that we're serving our students. And so my understanding coming away from this is that before the state was giving us the dollars to pay, the parents had the choice to send money with their students or not to. And so in that moment, the parents were in control of what food were, were their students consuming. So it's a different moment in time now because we're getting the funds from the state. And so the children, and this is more of an issue for the younger kids, the older kids can make better decisions, are coming to school and then they're making poor decisions. And so it feels like the district unintentionally is facilitating those poor decisions in, in some way because we've had the mindset that, well, we want the kids to eat. So as long, you know, as long as they're fed, I think we're moving away from that model to know we are trustees of this, of these dollars that are coming from the state. And we need to make sure that the kids are being fed better foods or having only good choices to make so that we're not leaving it up to them. So thank you, Dr. Breggy and Dr. Hasty, because my, my takeaway is that you guys are gonna look at the cold combo a little bit. It seems like most of the shelf life foods are in that combo. And so maybe we'll improve. And so I look forward to hearing more about that. And I, I think that if we put our heads together, we can solve it well because our hot foods are good.
Yeah. And we'll have an update for you after the meeting that we had last week.
Thank you. But then one thing that I wanted to present to my colleagues for their consideration is that is that you guys know that in the last six months, it's been one of the many things that I worry about, that we serve on a daily basis peanut butter and jelly, and I don't know if that's a good idea. And we've recently had a couple incidents where I think that we should consider becoming a nut-free environment in our elementary schools. When we are spending time and dollars training our teachers to administer EpiPens, and some are emotionally ready to do it, and some may not be, I think that it's getting a little complicated, and so I worry, and so if my colleagues are not opposed to it, I would ask Dr. Breggy to look into it. It's not that, you know, we can still do like sunflower seed butter and jelly, you know, there, there are other ways around it.
Right.
But this summer, we had a pregnant mom who was so worried about her young, her, her other student, that she ended up in the hospital with high blood pressure, you know? So we're having these kind of incidents, so I'm trying to figure out, why are we serving the peanut butter snack in our cold, cold combo?
Right.
I just think that maybe we need to rip the Band-Aid off, you know? It's a burden on the teachers, it's a real fear for the parents, and then the, the kids, you know, they can't advocate for themselves.
Yeah, I would love the opportunity to, you know, speak to some schools, school districts that have already made that move-
Yeah.
-to see how that's working for them. And so we will absolutely do that, and then, and get back with the board. But I, I definitely want to, before making a recommendation, being able to come back and say that, you know, we've, you know, what are the trials and tribulations with, you know, schools that have made that move?
Yeah.
Because I am aware that some did that and then repealed that, and I want to know-
Yeah.
-what happened.
Yeah, I'm not adamant one way or another.
No, but it's something to look into. I mean, if you think about, I mean, it's incredible how, just how allergic some people can be.
Yeah.
I mean, so if you have the risk of even three kids, let's say-
So long.
-that's too many. I mean, you know, it's just something to look at. I know that Southwest Airlines used to give out peanuts, and then it was discovered that some are so allergic that if you, say, open up the package and it goes around, someone could conceivably, and we're not talking about a little rash, we're talking about potential life.
Choking.
So it's, but at the same time, the fact that some of the, some of the districts rescinded that, it means that there must be some other factors. I know that protein, good protein sources are hard to find. I know they're picky eaters, I mean, there's a lot of things. But vegetarians-
It's good for vegetarians, yeah. But there are-
But, yeah, there's a lot of factors, and also, you're right, if it's packaged in a cold combo, or whatever you call it, and some younger, less discerning child picks it up, I mean, you know, so there's a lot to unpack, and I think that's worthy of-
And my question to us is, like, what is it going to take for us to do something? Does something have to go the wrong way?
No, but we should talk about it. Let's look into that.
No, no, and like you had mentioned, the, you know, just what's happening with the free lunch program in California, we're one of like 13 states in the, the entire country that are offering free breakfast and lunch for students. And so it, it, it used to be that people were afraid to make this move, because so many parents were packing lunches for students, and that was a quick, easy move to make a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. And so now that the school is providing a free lunch-
Yeah, it's unnecessary.
-that changes that a little bit and takes the burden off the parents, so it's something that we'll, we're going to talk about.
Thank you. And then the next committee that I wanted to report on is the Finance Committee, which was supposed to be later this week, and I could be wrong, but I think that this is the second Finance Committee meeting that has been canceled due to lack of quorum. And so I just wanted to raise that to everybody's attention. Maybe it means that we have to go back and look at our membership and check in with them to see, hey, does their schedule still permit them to join or not?
Yep.
Because I feel like we have a lot coming up in the next year or two, with the state of the world and, and property taxes and so on, and it would be great to have that community input.
So I can just share with you, because Dr. Haste and I talked about today, Mr. Elliot Finkel had reached out to me, and so we're going to have an opportunity, I'm suggesting that the, the three of us speak. I think that what they may need is just to refocus on, you know, they were very pleased with what was happening in the district with the Finance Committee, and they had raised questions like, well, what, what's next for us? You know, and so I think it's, it's again, just kind of like revitalizing that committee, and, and I think people just want to be useful.
Yes. And Dr. Breggy, even the committee themselves recommended that instead of monthly, they meet-
We just talked about that today.
Orderly.
Yes.
They recommended it.
We just talked about it today.
So, which that, I take that as a compliment, you know, that there is so much transparency and the board, the board meetings are informative, too. So, let us know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Marcus?
Well, I don't need to report on the Wellness Committee, because my colleague just did, so thank you very much. I will make it very brief, that I did attend the meeting, but Mrs. Manichari made a very comprehensive report. I did attend the Health and Safety Commission meeting yesterday. They had the usual report from the Fire and Police Department, the statistics, and the Fire Department before, there are no marked changes, they did highlight the 9/11 ceremonies that were held, and the complete cooperation and participation by the whole community. They congratulated the Madrigals for their participation in the performance at the event, which was very nice. The Police Department had no major things, I found something, a little bit of an anomaly, they said that the last month, the crime is down, but the arrests are up, but I could, I had a hard time correlating those two, but I accepted it, I didn't, I don't get a chance-
I'm trying to think of it myself.
... to ask questions, I sit in the audience.
Crime committed, doesn't mean the arrest-
Yeah, well, yeah, right, right. It just was cited or something, like-
But there was a report from the Community Development Department about the city itself, and they were discussing the no smoking ordinance, and how they are trying to control it, how they're trying to get reporting, and so on, and they think that maybe now, because of the way things have changed, they may have to change it a little bit, they need to go back and look at the ordinance to see if it does what they really want it to do, because there's been a lot of people who today still smoke on the streets, and so on, and people won't report them, and so on and so forth. So they're having a lot of trouble with controlling their ordinance of no smoking, and, and that would be a, a big problem. So rather than talk, and so I was also at the Day of Wellness on Sunday for a while. I attended the, we were the lucky ones, the book thing, and I thought that was an amazing, amazing event, and I look forward to the next one and think, wow, can it get any better? Because that was really truly spectacular, and so they really set the standard very high, and I think that would be very, very good. And then lastly, I'd like to mention that this night, Thursday night, the Beverly Vista Media is for security at 6:00 PM at Beverly Vista Media School. I hope that people will attend that, it's going to be very interesting, and I think that's about it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I also attended the Wellness Fair at Roxbury, and it was great, I really liked it, it was so hands-on, there were so many neat booths to look at, I learned things, I gave blood, and, you know, the cute little van, that you, very comfortable little, you know, cot in there, and I saw a number of people who did that, and that, that's always a great thing to do, Noah was one of them, did Laura as well? Yep, look at Laura, Noah, myself, a few other people. And we had, there were, you know, live classes for dancing, and it was just, it was great. And I also enjoyed the, the book reading, we were the lucky ones, and what I, one thing I took away is the, the writer said that the whole book was sparked because she had a, she was in high school, and she had an assignment to interview a family member, and she chose to interview her grandfather, who she said never spoke much about the Holocaust and family members who had perished, and at that interview, he did, and that sparked this whole book, which has become a New York Times bestseller, and also has made its way to Netflix, so that was great. And that's all I have.
I just had one thing about the, about the book, and I would address this to Dr. Seaman, and you can just nod or whatever. I know that the honors English classes worked the book into their summer reading. Is there any way that all English classes can consider doing that in the future? Because I think this would have been a very valuable experience for everybody.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. All right, yeah, okay. All right, well, with that, our next meeting is October 8th, and we look forward to seeing everyone, and that's it. Meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.